Just to let you know we are live.
Coaching something?
Amy?
Me, baseball.
What grade is that?
Uh, A U base, Coach Bitch. And then bigs getting ready to come so.
What?
Four H's getting ready to start.
Oh, you lead a four H group?
No, I got my son that does the pig so.
Oh.
I think we missed.
Well, those coming down to start breaking here soon. My favorite time of the year.
Yeah.
How about you? You guys doing any sport right now?
Uh, there's both doing volleyball, the elite, London Elite Volleyball. They don't have a tournament till, they have one in the March, they don't have one again till the end of April.
Really?
Yeah.
That's quite a break.
Yeah, I wanted to try to schedule one in there but um, I don't think the coaches were able to get anything.
Yeah.
You get so many tournaments, I think you get four tournaments plus the championship. If you add tournaments and you can, you have to pay the difference whatever. For nine kids, about twenty dollars whatever.
That's, that's well worth a good weekend.
Yeah.
When you break it down like that, it's not that.
Yeah. There's one in Finley last weekend, but a lot of the kids were on spring break, they were thinking it was gonna be free of the methane or something so, I don't know if they've got anything set up.
Who's the coach?
Um, City Long and her mom, C C Long. They're from Madison Square.
Yeah, technical difficulties today.
So what do we got Rex?
Who? I know who you're talking about now.
Think she's.
Oh.
I don't think she's too far out of high school.
Oh, really?
That's first time she's come.
It's always interesting to see first time coaches.
Oh, is that already true?
It's good, but it's sometimes like you don't see it as a coach, you still see it as a player. Kinda hard to differentiate. I know I struggle with that for sure.
Yeah, yeah, and I can do it.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah. Where was you guys first?
You want to go to? That's first one?
And we're ready to do that right?
Yeah, yep, okay.
I'd like to welcome everyone to London City Council, would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you, clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman Peters? Councilman Robertson?
Here.
President Comer?
Here.
Uh, Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes from our last meeting? Alright, I know we had one correction, but that's already been made, are there any other corrections or discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Alright, and we do have a public hearing this evening, that's for Resolution one thirty and also ordinance one thirty-one, so like a motion to enter our public hearing.
Make a motion to enter into public hearing for Resolution one thirty twenty-three and one thirty-one twenty-three.
Second.
Alright, clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters? Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Alright, we have entered our public hearing, uh, Resolution one thirty twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, clerk, please read the resolution.
Um, Resolution one thirty dash twenty-three sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission for Preliminary Development Plan.
Uh, so this has gone through the Planning Commission, but it also has to go through the City Council for um, approval of the development of the area between Eagleton and Kenny Road out to thirty-eight. That's basically it, I mean that area over there, so.
Okay, do we have any discussion or anyone here this evening to speak on this? Okay, and I think.
One thirty twenty-three.
One thirty twenty-three?
Lexington Green.
Okay, are you on the next one, one thirty-one twenty-three? Now, you, you just wanna speak, you just wanna speak in the audience. Okay, yeah, so it's not with one of these for the public hearing, okay, thank you. And we do have that uh, form here, so there's uh, no discussion for one thirty twenty-three? Okay, one, two, ordinance one thirty-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
So clerk, could you please read ordinance one thirty-one twenty-three?
Ordinance one thirty-one dash twenty-three sponsored by John Stahl and ordinance amending official zoning map.
This is for the property off of Lincoln Avenue, trying to get it all the same down in that area we talked about.
Okay, any uh, further discussion on one thirty-one twenty-three? Okay, and that's all that we have for our uh, public hearing, so like to entertain a motion to exit our public hearing.
Make a motion to exit the public hearing.
Second.
Alright, clerk, could you please take the roll call to exit our public hearing?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, and we have exited our public hearing, so on to our communications and announcements. Uh, we do not have any this afternoon, this evening, uh, so audience concerns, we do have a couple of those. Uh, so let's see, we'll start with Johnny Smith, and if you just come to the podium, please state your name, address, and you have five minutes, please.
Yeah, my, my name is Johnny Smith, I live at uh, one forty-five Old Ziney Road. Uh, built in a house on North Oak Street, and I'm having trouble getting water. Uh, I talked to Mr. Eads, I believe, earlier.
Uh huh.
And the mayor, I've talked. So just really wanting to know what they're gonna do about that.
You came to the BPU meeting about a month ago, correct?
Probably.
About a month ago, okay, I, I remember you. At that time, that was supposed to go to the law director?
I can speak on this if you'd like.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, so we, we've spoken, and we had a meeting, what, about a week and a half ago or so?
Yeah, the last.
Yeah, maybe less than two weeks. And has Carol stayed in contact with you?
Yes.
Okay, so the information that she is passing along to you, that's where we are currently, and we're s- we went out and we were looking at the lines today to see if there was a way that we could work with you. Um, just to let you guys know, there's an ordinance set up that talks about having to run water lines. If you build a new house, you have to run the water line to the farthest point of your property, if you don't have a main in front of you, right, um, to tap off of. So we've been working with Mr. Smith, um, because it's, it'd be quite expensive for him to do that, so we're trying to figure out other solutions to help you, correct? And that's why uh, the street department went out and are looking and locating the lines to see if there's any other way that we can help you out, so. Um, but I believe that Carol's been staying in real close contact within the past two weeks, if you're correct.
Right, and she said they would probably dig sometime this week.
Yeah, so, yep, yep, you're absolutely right.
So, I'm just still have to wait on whatever.
Yeah, on- once we can get that plan together, so, you know, as, as you know, we weren't able to get out, right, the other day when it was torrential downpour, so we're hoping to get out there and start checking it out, they were gonna try today and, and they'll be back at it tomorrow, so. And then Carol will stay in close contact with you, as she has.
Okay. Well, I guess that's it for now, I'll just wait on to hear from Carol, well, I'll, I'll call her tomorrow again.
Alright.
Do that.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mr. Smith, I had had, when I called you today, I'd had a message uh, to call you, so I did today. We spoke about this a little bit last night, as I said to you today, and I'm saying this publicly just because I think it needs to be said, that there's just, there's an awful lot of moving parts with all of this and things that we don't know that probably should be known, but if I were you, I would endeavor to get whatever you have to get in writing to move forward, you know, whether that's from the administration or the street or the Board of Public Utilities. At some point moving forward, they should be able to give you a, a concrete plan of what has to happen. And you have a builder still involved, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, the house was just about finished.
Okay, okay, and I didn't know, at that point when that started, what the builder may have known or should have known, or maybe nothing, I don't know.
Well, he came to the first meeting with us, and I think that was in, I got here in August, that was like September. And then I, you know, I went back to Florida, so my girlfriend come to a meeting, then I was just at the last meeting, but it just doesn't seem like it's getting anywhere, nobody knows.
Right, so it's been six months and you're still kind of in limbo with what can happen or should happen or?
Yes, sir.
So I hope, I, I believe when they say that they're on top of it, I know that Bill Long, last night said they were gonna go check today, and the mayor said that they were going to endeavor to do that today, I don't know that it, what was found out today, but hopefully, uh, as of last night, the mayor said they were hoping to have some answers for you by next Monday, so I, I hope that's still the case.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Tommy Boyd.
Tommy Boyd, forty-eight North Union Street, London, Ohio. Um, I'll start off with, I'm sorry, it was kinda late, just before the meeting, I sent you guys an email, if you wanna pull that up, it has the images I am talking about. Uh, the main first thing I have is, I know we have gone back and forth with the sidewalks, the curbs, everything else. This is the one at Elm Street, splitting out to Lafayette Street, at the three-way stoplight there. That thing's getting demolished by semis, I've seen them myself, and it's just apparent they're running it down, turned it into a little ramp, and so, that's one that I'm kinda curious on, I've asked who that's gonna be, and so far it's property owners. Is that something we can look into due to the city owns the street property as well? So I'd say with us owning property directly next to this curb also, it should give us some sort of liability, I would think. And so, once again, I'm sorry, if you wanna check those out, I have the images there of the property that London does own, as well as just a picture of the curb I'm talking to right next to the sewer. And so, yeah, the thing is just getting ran over, you can hear the truck boom. And so I figure that's a little too much traffic to be said, hey, that's on them, and it's probably a good.
So, so looking at that image, that's that little pocket park?
Going around the turn there.
That, that if you're coming from Lafayette Street, then you current all the way, it's like a?
Well, if you're coming from in-town going out towards Kroger's and Walmart and everything else, it'll be, yep, if you stop right at the stoplight there.
Alright, so according to Bill Long, that uh, property you're showing there, that does not belong to the city, it belongs to the property owner there, the city owns the property in the center there, and I'm repeating that since we didn't have a microphone, so.
Yeah.
And we've, we know that we've discussed sidewalks and curbs and everything, we know that those are the responsibility of the property owner to maintain those, so.
And so we're just gonna see this as a normal curb, you know, there's a lot of traffic that goes through that thing. I don't have semis going over my curbs.
So, so what I would ask, Rex, is this something that we would like send a letter to the property owner and say, hey, your curb is in disrepair, we need to repair that, and this is what it's gonna cost, and it'll, you know, end up on your bill, so we can take care of that?
I don't wanna take somebody else off that, but.
Well, but if.
I get what you're saying, cause that's our official code, and that's how we're going to, you get, enforce it.
Yeah, that's, that's.
No, it's almost halfway into the sidewalk, so I mean, the scary part is somebody riding a bike not seeing it, and something happens and they cut into that traffic there coming by. What do we have then, whose problem is that? And so, it's kinda, I'd rather see something happen, unfortunately, yes, it does sound like we're gonna kinda put on a homeowner.
Are you talking about the curb where they put the signs up?
It's. Triangle Park, yeah, coming right out here, stoplight going out towards Kroger, right before you get to Lafayette there.
That's like one oh two.
Thirty-eight Lafayette, that curb.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I, I don't have to fix it.
Sorry, Pat, I did, I sent that to council, my bad.
They do have a copy of them.
How do you know that damage is from semis going across there, what's?
Sitting at the light behind Amazon, watching it.
Oh, you've been watching?
Oh, yeah.
Recently?
I mean, it was just kind of a, happened to be there, and it was a, let's see what happens, and makes it around into that last tire, just pops right off it, and so, it's just kinda gotten worn down enough, now I think they don't really mind it.
Okay, now they've had a chance to take a look at the photos. So, I asked, is it where they put the signs up on Triangle Park, you said yes, that's not where, that's not where we're talking about.
Opposite that. Yep.
Okay, you're talking about on thirty-eight, thirty-eight to thirty-eight.
Going out towards Lafayette, yes.
Are you talking about going out towards the school or to Kroger?
Kroger's.
Okay, so going out towards Kroger.
You're taking a right out towards Kroger's, you can see it at the stoplight.
Across from Triangle Park.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, well, and it's a good, we have our street department superintendent here, and the mayor said they will take a look into that, and, you know, like we've discussed in the past, those curbs and sidewalks are the property owners, so.
Backlash there.
But thank you for bringing it to us, and uh, they said they will have a look into that.
Yeah, and that's most we can do for now.
Alright.
Um, alright, second piece, is the trash ordinance that is being enforced on the businesses. Um, out of the nineteen, is there a coglin on that list? Would we know that?
What, what is that?
New companies that have to have the trash removal done by the City of London, that we're pushing for. You guys didn't get one from Les?
Yeah, we, we have it, I don't have it in front of me.
Gotcha, I'm just not sure if his name's on there?
No, if you wanna tell me, we can say it's on the list.
Okay, cause I've kinda, unfortunately heard that's one that, hey, you wanna go tell him, go tell him, Tommy. And I, unfortunately, if we haven't chatted with him and his name is on that list, we have other issues coming. I heard that that's one of the names on there, when chatting with him, because I asked for the list itself, actually, and nobody would give it to me, I'd like to have been able to see that at the BPU, but if.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Who did you ask, who'd you ask for the list from?
Les.
And he said, no, I'm not giving it to you?
It just, they kinda walked their own way, I didn't.
Okay, so he didn't say that?
He didn't say no.
Okay, but you just said that he said he wasn't gonna give it to you. We're not gonna hold, we're not gonna hold pub- public documents away from the citizens, if you would like it, email me the request, I will send it to you. And then you said that, somebody said that, Tommy, go tell them, did somebody say for you to go out and?
No, they said that was one of the nineteen that we will be changing.
Okay.
And so I said, I've worked with Tom before, I had a business in this town, and so it's one of those things, I'm alright with chatting with him, and so, it seems like one that.
We can handle this, we appreciate your help, though.
It's gonna be something that the city's gonna deal with, and so for enforcing something at the BPU and saying, Les, just figure out how to get it done at the BPU, you know, saying we're tired of hearing them say no, that is forcing them to look into new employees, possibly a new track, a new truck. The sanitation department is busy enough right now, and so I just asked that we aren't pushing that as heavily as it seems we are right now, for those fifty-one extra stops, so, that is all from me, thank you very much.
Thank you. On to our committee reports, uh, we'll begin with Mr. Stahl.
I don't have anything, we have Sa- uh, Finance Monday at six o'clock, and we have uh, uh, Safety Services Committee, Safety Committee, I should say, on Tuesday, the eleventh at five, coming up.
Mr. Hitt?
I have nothing new.
Alright, Mr. Hayes?
Uh, I wasn't present for the BPU meeting, I had surgery that day, but I do have a few notes from it, so I'll read those. There's some legislation on for tonight, uh, Mr. Lallonic motion, made a motion for a slime, lime sludge contract to go to council to run the ad for a new contract, that is on for tonight. Under wastewater, Mr. Lallonic requested information for a new vac truck uh, for the next BPU meeting, uh, we're looking into that, I think I brought that up at the last meeting that we talked about that, uh, with an option to purchase and/or lease. Uh, sanitation department, uh, just like Mr. Boyd's talking about dumpster information, uh, they're reviewing commercial dumpsters at this time, nothing's been said for sure, and uh, under Mrs. Bendick's office, they've ordered an additional twenty-five hose bibs, and they will be introducing the eye on water, the first of May, to customers with cellular meters, and they can kind of watch their water usage, and that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Robinson?
Well, I attended a public service meeting last night, uh, I'll go over the street department.
Okay.
It's been a couple months since we met, so the list is quite long. As we all know, we've gotten quite a bit of weather lately, so they have been very busy cleaning out catch basins, fixing the storm sewers, uh, they've actually been, there's trees now washing down the creeks that they're having to clear out. So, that has been a large part of this list, uh, they did work with the contractor on McNeil Avenue, put in three hundred foot of city sanitary sewer, um, they've been patching potholes, uh, in alleys and streets multiple times. I mean, majority of this is cleaning, the old plow truck that we gave them, uh, the ability to, to go out and find bids, they did sell it, they had two bids, so for twenty-seven fifty, Bill actually said that was better than what he was anticipating. They did pick up the new F five fifty, um, they're getting it all suited, they're getting prices for the bedding, and every- everything he needs to equip his truck with. They did get some quotes on tearing down the houses that were caught on fire that are still standing. They did hire Liz Whitmore, they still have an opening for the uh, street department. Also, uh, they're looking at moving the community gardens, uh, they were not only vandalized last year, but people kept picking off vegetables on it, so they're looking at putting fencing around it and locking it up, and the, the individuals that are renting it, they'll have a co- combination lock, which they're only given, so to kind of keep that safe from the people who don't like to ask or treat things nicely. So, uh, the next meeting is May third, uh, at six P M, in the room behind us.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Eads?
I also attended the uh, Service Committee meeting last night, I'm gonna have one little correction for Council Robinson there. The community gardens, I don't think we have to buy or put up fence, I think they're gonna put them where the BMX track was, so there's already a fence in place.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that's.
I know, is that the edge of the BMX putt?
Yeah, we just don't have to pay for fence, it's already there, so that's, that's a good thing. Uh, so, I'm gonna cover the uh, safety, or my, sorry, the uh, recreation part of the Public Safety or Public Service Committee last night. Uh, updates on the pool, Coleman and Sons Painting, they were there, they have done the sandblasting for better term, that's what I'm gonna call it, the sandblasting part of that, they are finishing caulking the cracks in the joints in the pool, they've had Baldwin in to make some other repairs, uh, so that's mostly done, they are hoping to start painting at the pool next week, it's gonna take a couple coats, uh, once they put the first coat on, they're gonna have to wait seven days, or once they get done, they have to wait at least seven days before they can put water in the pool. They have repaired the concrete repairs and the gutter curbs, which I wasn't sure what that was, but that's, I believe, up on the edge of the pool, what they call those, the gutter curbs, those had to be repaired, they're gonna have more concrete repairs done in May, that's gonna be the main decking around the pool that needs to be replaced. They're still looking to hire lifeguards, if you know someone that wants to be a lifeguard, they're still looking to hire lifeguards, and they're going to put on a class, uh, lifeguard training class from May thirtieth to June first, for all their new hi- lifeguards, they're hoping they have enough lifeguards already on staff that they can open on time. Spring volleyball, hundred and thirteen kids signed up to play, games have started, they're gonna run through the end of April, their end of the season tournament will be on May first. They did have the items that were, that people might have seen on social media, and the items that were surplus items because of the demolition of the building, including the uh, the basketball adjustable baskets, those were put out for bid, and they did auction off items, bringing in three thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars, some items still need to be picked up by April tenth. The ball fields, we discussed this last time, they wanted to renovate the two ball fields at Merrimack and also the ball field at Park Avenue, they've decided that they're going to do most of that renovation work themselves, do it in-house, it's gonna save us a lot of money by doing that, um, they are going to start with the Merrimack fields. I questioned why we didn't start with Park Avenue because it's used more, um, however, the London Fast Pitch Softball Organization um, is involved, they practice down there, and evidently they're, they're working on the field some too, so that they can practice down there, uh, they have ordered some of the mix for the fields, and they, they hope to get those things done, so that is the update for the Recreation Department.
Alright, thank you. Alright, on to our City of. Alright, one to our City Official Reports.
Alright. Alright, thanks everyone for coming out, um. I did have the honor of swearing in our newest police officer, which is Officer Bryce Bennett. Officer Bennett is a local man, um, who's making a lateral transfer to our department. I do feel he will be a great fit and serve the citizens of London to the best of his ability, so just wanted to welcome him into the, uh, to the City of London. Um, I was able to attend the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Morpsey State of the Region Luncheon this past Friday. It was a great event and it's exciting time for the region and how the region is growing, so I'm just proud that we're being proactive instead of reactive and really getting prepared for the future. I attended the ribbon cutting for Madison County Chamber of Commerce for the London Farm Fresh Market located at one nineteen South Main Street in downtown London, so welcome to them, that is, if you're curious, that is the old Procter Store. Um, so there's a new business in there, they have all kinds of great stuff, you can even go in there and get you a cold sub for lunch, that they're having made from, uh, Main Street Deli over on West Jeff, so. Attended the Madison County Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, the meeting was actually held at Toll's Career and Technical Center and lunch was provided by the culinary class. So if you were at the Bonanza last year for the chamber, they, the kids were the ones who came in and made all the food and served all the food for Bonanza. But, just a little fact, they serve lunch out there, so you can go out there, they have like a little restaurant in the school at Toll's. So Monday through Friday, if you call and make sure that they're not having to do some other classwork, they run a restaurant in there. Um, and the food is just amazing, so if you ever have time and you're up that way towards Toll's and you can pop in there for lunch and call ahead and make sure they're doing it, it is well worth it and it, it helps the kids out as they're trying to learn and get all this stuff figured out for their next step in life, so definitely check that out if you have time. I attended the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting and they had two cases on the agenda. One case was for Coglin Automotive, it was a variance for a sign which was a little odd, but, uh, they wanted to put in a rotating lighted ten-foot car lift to be placed in front of their business where you could pull a car up, lift it up ten feet and the car would spin around in a circle. The case did have a motion for approval, but no one seconded the motion, so that case failed due to the lack of a second. Arbor Homes was here for a variance and that's for Brooks Edge Three. This case was, uh, to get permission to build some of their new houses back there in Brooks Edge Three, with smaller two-car garages, so our code says that our two-car garages really have to be a two-and-a-half car garage, uh, over six hundred feet, which is kind of large. Um, so they came in to get a variance for around four, a little over four hundred feet, so that case did pass. Attended the Madison Health Drive-Thru Easter Bunny Event today with my son. This is one of the many, if anybody was out and about last week, it seemed like everybody was doing something for Easter with an Easter bunny or an Easter egg hunt. There was multiple ones all over town and all over the county, and I just wanna thank all those people that put those events on, like Kiwanis, London Health and Rehab, um, the Nazarene Church, I mean, there was just so many, and then Madison Health today, so thank you to all those groups and businesses that did that, um, for our kids this past week. Important one, the Water Department will be cleaning the contact tank starting Monday, April seventeenth, okay? And that should last about four days to complete. So this is a tank that the bearing was repaired on, that we talked about not too long ago. We have to do continued maintenance on it to keep it running effectively. This is the softening tank, so for a few days, people may notice a little bit of harder water and we apologize for any inconvenience, but we need to make sure that we are taking care of our equipment, so that'll start on Monday, the seventeenth. We will put it on the website, put it on social media, try to let everybody know, I, I think we're even gonna do a one-call on it. So now on to the fun fact, which is number six, I have done six weekly updates so far on social media, um, and on the website, so like we talked about before, it's just a way to try to get as much information out as possible of what we're getting into, what we're doing, what we have going on around the city, so I ask people to definitely check that out, so we can, um, get you as much information as possible, and as always, we're always here. So give us a call or shoot us an email if you ever have any questions. And that's all I have, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, uh, anything from our Auditor's Office? Uh, Rex, you have anything, alright. On to our Old Business, we have our tabled item, Ordinance one fifty-one twenty-two.
I'm gonna make a motion real quick.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to motion, uh, make a motion to amend, um, one thirty and one thirty-one to be added to Old Business.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Second. Second, alright. Clerk, please take the roll call, uh, to amend to add, uh, Resolution one thirty and Ordinance, uh, one thirty-one twenty-three to the Old Business.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Alright. Now, our agenda has been amended, okay, and then, uh, like I said, we have our tabled item, is there anything new there, uh, Rich, you have that?
I don't have anything, Mayor, do you have anything from Palti?
Yeah.
Was that last week, last week, last week I went out to lunch with Jim Hiles and, um, I know I've said this a few times, but it really seems like they're coming down to, um, the end on getting this contract finally figured out between the two parties. So, um, I was hoping to have better news that we could untable it today, but hopefully, hopefully, fingers crossed, by the next meeting, we'll be able to untable it. Um, did we have a public hearing for that already?
Uh, I believe we did have a public hearing for the original.
We had a public hearing and tabled it?
Right.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to double check with that because when they come, I assume they're gonna wanna get started as soon as possible if they're able to get that contract done, so, good news, it was a good lunch, so. Okay. One, two. For the, uh, let's see here, and that's the second reading too for one thirty, is that for, uh?
One thirty and one thirty-one should be at least on their third reading.
Yeah, okay, so that's the third reading. So, one, for the third reading, uh, Resolution one thirty twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one thirty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters.
Or one, we're at one thirty.
One thirty.
The public hearing, uh.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
I bounced around a little bit. Resolution one thirty dash twenty-three, sponsored by Andrew Hitt, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission for Preliminary Development Plan.
So this is the development of the area, um, between Eagleton and Kenny Road, going out towards thirty-eight. Um, it's already gone through the Planning Commission, it just needs to come through council for approval or disapproval, one of the two.
Okay, and we just met in our public hearing on this, and do we have any discussion now for one thirty twenty-three? Okay, and what are council's wishes here?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second for adoption, Clerk, could you please take the roll call for adoption?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, one thirty twenty-three has been adopted, on to, uh, for the third reading, our Ordinance one thirty-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance one thirty-one dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stahl, and Ordinance amending official zoning map.
This is for the property off of Lincoln Avenue to make all that area one the same.
It'll be residential, right, from business?
Mm-hmm. There was one store there at one time.
Right.
It was never changed back, so.
Move for adoption.
I'm second it.
Okay, so we have a first and a second for adoption, Clerk, could you please take the roll call for adoption?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance one thirty-one twenty-three has been adopted. One for our second reading, uh, Resolution one thirty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one thirty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations. The ball fields at Merrimack Park and on Park Avenue need improvements and the available funds must be appropriated prior to expenditure.
Okay, and Josh has not heard this evening, uh, do you know anything about that?
Yep, so, with the changes from public service to finance, we wanted to do this in-house. I know, um, Landen has ordered the first two truckloads of, uh, mix. Uh, of course, with the weather, can't do too much, so we can't figure out how many truckloads, so that's kind of, uh, where we're at on that. So it's just appropriating money to make the improvements to the wellfields.
Okay, this is our second reading on that, have any further discussion there?
Well, so at the last meeting, we did appropriate some money, which is paying for the materials.
Twenty-one.
Right.
Twenty-one thousand.
And, and I believe that the initial thought was this was gonna be seventy thousand, including the labor for that company to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we, we've purchased materials or we've set aside money for materials at this point. Just, just, just a heads up that we may not need to do anything with this moving forward.
Okay.
We can leave it on, obviously, because we don't have any further information, but this, this may not be an ordinance that has to be addressed at all, we might let it, uh, die.
Okay.
Basically what he said, he said there's no, no real update on actual cost, because we're still in the first two truckloads and those haven't even been put down. To understand how much.
How much more we need.
Yeah, how much more material we would need for that project.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you have anything?
Yeah, so, kinda like what Greg said, we're trying to do this in-house, right, we're trying to save money and do it in-house. So we were hoping to have a lot more done by right now, but you guys know how beautiful the weather's been lately and getting out onto a ball field has been very tough, um, but we are asking that this just stay on. So, um, if something does come, come up that we do need a professional to come in and help, that we'll be able to come back and use this legislation, so just leave it on for the third reading if you don't mind.
Okay, and we'll leave that on because we need additional information as well, so hopefully we can get started on that and, and we'll know where to go from there. Alright, on to Resolution one thirty-nine twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes and Henry Comer, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of London, Ohio, to apply for Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account, WSRLA, on behalf of the City of London for construction of the North Main Street Water Main replacement project, designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
Uh, it's pretty self-explanatory, um, I think it's, is it three thousand feet that they're gonna do out there?
Okay, and then that dollar amount again? Is it?
One point two.
Yeah.
Right now, all we're doing is, uh, asking to be nominated, we're not applying for a loan.
Alright. Okay.
Okay, this has got an emergency clause on it, so I would move, so they can move, I would move, uh, to limit the three reading rule.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to suspend the three reading rule, so they can move forward with this. Uh, Clerk, could you please take the roll call for suspension?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Moved to adopt. We just can't, can't suspend it, can we? There's only five of us?
Yeah, cuz there's five. Cuz there's five, you have to have five, so.
Yeah, we have to be five.
And we have five, so if someone said no, then we couldn't, but we're good. So now we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
And a second, Clerk, could you please take the roll call for adoption?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, so one thirty-nine twenty-three has been adopted, so they can move forward with that. On to Ordinance one forty-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance one forty-one dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads and Henry Ho, Comer, and Ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement and declaring emergency.
So we have three ordinances in a row, one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, that all deal with this. They, according to their paperwork, have three separate buildings that they're applying this to. My objection last time to suspend the rules was because I wanted people to be able to at least read about this and know about it before we decided to move forward without any opportunity for the repu, for the public to have any input. This point, I've talked myself, I've talked to a few business owners in the downtown area, they are in favor of this, they think it can only benefit them. I don't know of any objections and I don't know if any of you councilmen have any objections to this now, but I would remove my objection to suspend the rules, hearing no other objections from anyone else.
Okay, then what are our wishes for one forty-two twenty-three?
To make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Second, alright, Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
Alright, first and second for adoption, Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
One forty-one twenty-three has been adopted and, uh, like Mr. Eads said, all of these, uh, one forty-one, one forty-two and forty-three all go together and I'd like to just thank you guys, uh, the city for posting those on the site, because that rendition of what they're going to do over there is absolutely amazing, so. And that's been posted, uh, you know, everywhere and, and everyone has had a chance or seen the information on how to look up some of the things that this Warnock group has done and they have done some amazing work. So I'm feeling, uh, pretty positive that they'll be able to come and do some of the same things in our city and to actually be able to get them completed in, in a timely manner too, so I'm looking forward to that. Alright, on to Ordinance one forty-two twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance one forty-two dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads and Henry Comer, and Ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement and declaring an emergency.
Second verse, same as the first, same thing as one forty-one, so again, I have not heard any complaints and I've only heard positive comments.
Maybe just suspend the three reading rule?
Second.
Alright, first and second, Clerk, could you please take the roll call for suspension?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
One forty-two twenty-three has been adopted, on to Ordinance one forty-three twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance one forty-three dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads and Henry Comer, and Ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Comer, your name's on this too, you take this one.
Uh, third verse, same, uh, same as the first and the second. Uh, you know, and I think that the deal that they wanted to, uh, strike us with here with the, uh, um, abatement of the taxes, I think that's a good deal because it's not going to one hundred percent abate those taxes. They're still going to be paying taxes at the current rate, uh, you know, and, and that's good in the schools, they accept that as well, so I, I think right now this will be a win-win situation, it'll give them a chance to get some things done on that property, save a little bit of money on taxes, which they'll be able to reinvest in the property, so I think that's a really, really good deal.
And I'm, I'm gonna add very little to this. Um, Mr. Mayor, I know that you're involved with the, the group that, what, on an annual basis looks at these tax reviews. It's at the county level, what's the name of the group? It's at the county level, what's the name of the group, I can't remember?
Tax Reinvestment.
That's at the county level? Is that the, is that what that is?
I'll turn the mic on, so it's Turk, the Tax Incentive Review Committee. Um, they consist of Jennifer Hunter and her office, um, city administration, our auditor's office. And, uh, yeah, we just reveal them, you guys just had them in front of you at council, we reveal them, make sure that they are keeping up their end of the bargain on all abatements.
Thank you. So, I, so I had a discussion with someone in Jennifer Hunter's office, uh, not about these, well, we did mention these specifically, but it was something else, but the, the, the future abatement of this taxes, they could still pay more taxes. Depends on how it is viewed by the auditor's office and the company they have come in on what is truly an improvement and what's not. So some of this could be abated, but they could still pay more taxes than what they are today. That may not be guaranteed, that they're gonna keep the property taxes the same. So there could be some additional funds, I was glad to hear that, that it wasn't just locked in regardless. That's a, there's a real process there.
Okay.
I don't really know very much about, but it sounds like it's pretty involved.
In-depth.
Yeah.
Okay, anything further?
Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved it out.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, one forty-three twenty-three has been adopted, on to ordinance one, yes.
I, I just want to let you guys know that I did receive artist renderings of the other two buildings, too, so we'll put those out also. And they're more of a stone color, to keep with the color that's already there.
That's good to hear.
Mm-hmm.
All right, on to ordinance one forty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance one forty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters. An ordinance, amending section fourteen seventy-six of the codified ordinance.
All right, does anyone have, uh, information on this, since Mr. Peters is not here this evening?
So we're looking at the attachment to that, this specifically, was talking about when you were going to move, striking five acres of war down to one acre, so it's gonna tighten this regulation up when it comes to storm water control.
Okay. And do we wanna leave this on, or is there further discussion here, or? Leave that on?
I think we should get it in books.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second it.
Okay, so for ordinance one, uh...
Right, it's not, there's not the emergency clause, so it'll still be thirty days after, but, yeah.
All right, clerk, could you please take the roll call for suspension?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved it out.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please take the roll call for adoption?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, on to ordinance one forty-six twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance one forty-six dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters. An ordinance amending section fourteen seventy-six of the codified ordinance, ordinance.
All right, have any further information on this, again?
So this was really in-depth. We discussed it at the last meeting, that it was choice one, that helped design all of this, again, for stormwater, um, management. Um, I had one slight suggestion that maybe we would change the language on one thing, just so that we wouldn't have to come back and edit this, just because the state made a change. Um, and I don't know if anybody's checked with the law director on this yet, to see if that would make sense, or whether we just wanna do that. It was just a real simple, uh, verbiage change, just to say we would use the most recent document as provided by the state, not one that was specified in here.
Okay, uh, any further discussion, one forty-six twenty-three? Okay, what are our wishes here?
Make a motion to suspend three reading rule.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and second, clerk, could you please take the roll call for suspension?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved it out.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second for adoption, uh, clerk, could you please, uh, take the roll call for adoption?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, I think you were more sure about that one. On to our new business, uh, ordinance one forty-nine twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance one forty-nine dash twenty-three, sponsored by, there is not a name. An ordinance authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to advertise for bids and enter into contract according to the, to law for lime sludge removal.
I'll take it.
Yeah, that, yeah. Yeah, we would make a motion to amend this, and, uh, this was one that I was gonna sponsor with, Mr., uh, Hayes, you can sponsor that.
I'll make a motion to amend, did I sponsor this legislation?
Second.
Okay, uh, clerk, please take the roll call for amendment.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, so...
For clarification, that was just one, Councilman Hayes is the sponsor, or, oh?
Yes.
Just one?
Yes.
Okay, basically, uh, this is saying this authorizing the Board of Utilities to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract according to law with the lowest and best bidder for lime sludge removal.
Okay.
This came up last night, wasn't really a proper place to come up, except it needed to come up evidently due to time. It's, this, this is my complaint about this, this is something that probably happens on a regular basis, it shouldn't have to be an emergency. It should've already been considered and put in place, before it has to come before the wrong committee last night and come before us tonight for emergency measures, but I understand why they wanna do that.
Now, when did we receive any information on this, to, to bring it to us, wasn't it? Has I never received the call that it was, uh...
It was addressed at the BPU meeting, which is your last meeting of the month.
Right, okay.
So in order to make it to council, it has to flow the way it flows. Um, I, you know, I don't understand why it wasn't brought to, to the board, you know, the week, the month before. I mean, you're constantly creating sludge, so I don't know what...
Right, yeah, 'cause if it was in the Board of Public Utilities, then, yeah, it could've, uh, been brought here, but then gone through public service, yeah, I see what you're saying. Um...
Well, irregardless, it just, it probably could've, it was probably known that the contract was up at a certain time, and it could've been addressed three or four months ago, and just went through normal readings, and not been an emergency. That's, that's my only objection, this was kind of a, um, became a rush, because it was forgotten about evidently for a while.
All right, so then, once we found out that it had been forgotten about, we couldn't continue to forget about it, so we had to, uh, make sure to get it on the, on the agenda for this evening, or we would, uh, have this at our next meeting, uh, which would push it out even further. But I do understand that, you know, sometimes we, uh, may negate to put things on here, but I, I'm glad they did give me that information, and we did get that through, uh, the committee in order to get it here, uh, this evening. So now that'll hopefully take care of, uh, that portion of it.
This does have an emergency, uh, on it, so I would make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and second to, uh, suspend, uh, clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved it out.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption, clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, uh, on to Resolution one fifty twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one fifty dash twenty-three, sponsored by Brian Robinson. Resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded in twenty twenty-three.
Uh, so this is an annual thing, um, just gives us the opportunity to get on the bid list of, uh, the salt that's given out by, by, oh, the hired Department of Transportation. Uh, it's just an annual thing that we have to do.
Okay, and we definitely don't wanna miss out on that, we wanna be a part of that, uh, just in case. Uh, we know how bad winters can get around here, so we wanna make sure we have salt with that, and we're in that bidding process.
When did, Mr. Castle, when did ODOT let us know, once again, this process was opening? The end of last month. The, uh, state is very generous in notifying us in advance, they gave us at least thirty days' notice. It's due the first of May.
All right, so we can either suspend this, or, uh, keep it on, but, uh, you know, it's very important that we are included in the bidding process for that salt.
Yeah, I, I would ask that you suspend it, just in case if there's two council members not at the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we can't suspend, we, we...
And then that would push it out.
We'll, we'll be out of, yeah, we would be out of it, and we need to get in on this, 'cause this helps us get cheaper salt through the ODOT bidding process.
Right.
I make the motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please take the roll call for suspension?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved it out.
Second.
All right, we have a first and second for adoption, clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Moving on to Resolution one fifty-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one fifty-one dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stahl. A resolution to establish a trap, spay, neuter, return program.
This is something we've been working on quite a few months, they came up with this, it's trying to issue a, a feral cats throughout the city. This helps sta- a trap-neuter type program, have neutered, then they can be let loose again, and won't have ten million cats running around as much. And they can be reimbursed off ten dollars for cats, neuter application, eight dollars for flea treatment. And I think we should let it go on, a couple of reasons, so the public knows a little more about it.
Okay, now also, too, we do have, uh, Tammy Braskett is here, uh, this evening.
Oh, I didn't see her back there.
Yeah, she's here to, to discuss there, because I know there was another piece that went along with this.
That's...
Uh, so we wanted to get that added in there, 'cause I, I don't think we had a, a dollar amount at that time, and, and we do have that now. And again, I'd like to thank Tammy for bringing this, uh, this to me a couple of months ago. Uh, you know, I knew that there was an issue, but then you gave the actual information, that was unbelievable, how many cats, so...
Um, you know, we had talked about the euthanasia piece, if there's one that comes in that is disease-ridden, virus-ridden, that doesn't, you know, shouldn't be returned. Um, euthanasia is very, can be very expensive. If you're talking about a citizen who is doing this trapping these animals, um, to help control the population, they can't... Then we're gonna ask them to absorb the euthanasia, which can sometimes be upwards of a hundred dollars. I got, I did get a price from Sunnyside, their price is sixty-eight dollars. We had that in the ordinance originally, um, I did not get the information, Jennifer, um, she took it out. So I stopped today, she says we would have to, you know, you guys know more, amend.
Amend it.
Yeah, to get it back in there, which sixty-eight dollars is not that bad. And it also, if there's one that gets hit, um, just all kinds of things, that it needs to be put down. It gives, uh, that person the ability to go ahead and euthanize, and of course, this is all reimbursement, and then we reimburse. So, you know, we had talked about that at length, I thought, I mean, we had three meetings, so, okay? Does anybody have any more questions?
Well, yeah, because you just brought up a whole new factor, if, if an animal gets hit and somebody takes it in to get euthanized, and we're gonna reimburse them for that, that's not covered by this program.
No, it isn't covered by this program, but if you have, so I'm gonna say this, if I'm an individual out trapping, and I, and I am trying to get some, and I run them out in the street, and I know they get hit, and I'm like, I'm stuck there with this animal, um, that is feral, that I'm trying to trap, then it's gonna have to be euthanized. I'm not talking about, uh, you know, somebody walking down the street, and it's a pet, somebody's pet's laying in the street, and we're gonna pick it up, take it in, get it euthanized, this is feral, and I'm gonna say this, the people that are doing the trapping in your neighborhoods are gonna know these animals, that, that's why they're participating, is to get them under control and possibly relieve some of the pressure that they have in taking care of them. I've ran into it, I can tell you that, in, in trapping. I've ran into animals that need to not be returned, because they're sick, and, uh, they're out there reproducing and passing on disease, so...
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so what are our wishes here to amend this?
I make a motion to amend it, uh, to put this sixty-eight dollar euthanasia fee into the language, and then, I believe I'll leave it on.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to amend?
Second.
All right, we, the first and second to amend, clerk, please take the roll call to amend.
Councilman Eads?
Yes, but I, I, yes, we'll, we'll discuss in a minute, thanks.
Councilman Robinson?
Yeah.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll leave this on, and now this'll go back to the committee, 'cause we're gonna leave this on, so there can be further discussion within the committee as well, and Mr. Eads, you have something in addition?
Well, just the fact that we're putting dollar amounts in here that may not apply in five years or whatever, that's gonna have to be brought back before council to change that. So when we put those definite dollar amounts, even if, if they can't find anyone, I mean, I guess it's reimbursement. So if someone does take, uh, a cat, a feral cat, uh, to be spayed or neutered, and they're only gonna be reimbursed ten dollars, it's not gonna be done that cheap anyway, so this is just a reimbursement, that's pretty, a small amount, just... That's my only objection, if we have numbers in here, we may have to change them later, but I don't know a better way to handle it anyway, so...
Okay, and, uh, like I say, again, that can be something that's further discussed within the committee.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You can always change that when we bring that back again. All right, on to Resolution one fifty-two twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one fifty-two dash twenty-three, sponsored by John Stahl, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Just they talked about having five thousand dollars in a fund to do this. I'll just leave it on first, the other one.
Okay, and that's five thousand dollars for which fund?
It's in the general fund, but it's made a new line, an expense line.
Okay, a new expense line in, in the general fund, and, uh, you can use the mic. What are those, what would those funds be used for, are they earmarked for something, or?
The euthanization.
Oh, for the euthan- so five thousand dollars we're gonna set aside in the general fund for this euthaniz-
But euthanize...
For the, uh, feral, feral cat legislation, for feral, uh, the trapping and spay and neuter, and, uh, now also euthanizing.
That's not true unless we amend this ordinance to add that.
Uh, one fifty-two?
Yeah.
Okay, so... Okay, so.
Because it says also needs to have funds available to reimburse residents for up to ten dollars per cat neutered and up to eight dollars per flea treatment. We have to add that other language so that it covers that also, I would think.
All right, so we'll need a motion to amend this as well, to add the sixty-eight dollars for euth- euthanizing animals, or feral cats.
Make the motion to amend the legislation to include the sixty-eight dollars for the euthanasia of a injured cat?
Second.
Or sick.
Or sick cat, yes.
Okay, so we have a first and second to amend, one fifty-two twenty-three. Hey, clerk, could you please take the roll call to amend?
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay. So that has been adopted as well, and we'll leave that on with the other piece of legislation. On to ordinance one fifty-three twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one fifty-three dash twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes, an ordinance amending section four sixteen of the codified ordinances.
Uh, yes, what this does, it amends the ordinance to, this concerns trains going through our city. The maximum allowable speed for any railroad locomotive or railroad car which passes to the corporation limits of the city, and other words, a train shall be thirty miles per hour. Again, thirty miles per hour. There is a B section, the city may recover from any engineer, conductor, or company violating this section, not less than five dollars or more than fifty dollars for each offense, which would involve us going, it would be a civil, it'd be a civil matter, we'd have to take into account, so. We got the trains at thirty miles per hour, we can check their speeds. I think it's a good ordinance, considering what's been going on. I've just had another railroad derailment last week, I think it's three or four in the last month, so need to get them slowed down.
So chapter four sixteen itself covers pedestrians. So we're going to add four sixteen, point sixteen, which is a brand new, a brand new section to do this. And we discussed this at a meeting before, I mean, it's, it certainly sounds goo- good to have that, and I think it says to the public, hey, we care enough to, we worry about this, but there's absolutely no teeth to it if it's a civil issue. You can't do anything other than try to figure out who the conductor was and send him a summons, or send him a bill for whatever that fee might be, from five to fifty dollars, and I guess you have to go to court to get that applied. I mean, there's really no teeth to this at all, other than.
That's, that, that's section B, if memory serves me correctly, that's as much as we can do as far as the state legislature is concerned?
Because it's a railroad track, and we can't really control that, right?
Correct, exactly.
So this has as much teeth as what we passed last time to tell the, the state legislator to do something to control trains. I mean, it's just, it's just us telling the people here that we are concerned about their welfare.
How fast are trains going through the town anyways? I mean, I don't feel like they're.
Do we know? Do we have any record of that, of how fast they generally travel?
Yes.
Can you give that to us?
Oh, yes. So, um, they do average about thirty miles an hour. So I did a study, and we were able to get about ten trains, and they, anywhere from the low end of around twenty-two to twenty-four miles an hour, but up over thirty to thirty-four, thirty-six. Average was about thirty miles an hour.
This isn't going to do much.
Yeah, if they're already at about thirty miles an hour, that's not really.
I think the thinking was to kind of have something in place to, for the city to have, I guess, some kind of standing if something were to happen.
Something officially in place that says, hey, you're supposed to.
If they were going through faster than what they should have been, and, and a derailment occurred, then that would, might give the city some kind of standing to.
My suggestion, my suggestion was twenty-five miles an hour. Cars through a residential neighborhood have to go twenty-five miles an hour, so why would a train through a residential area not have to go twenty-five miles an hour? And the committee decided to go thirty, so.
And I believe the trains have some type of a, I can't think of the term I want, but it records their speed at all times, so if there was such a accident or derailment in our town, that information could be gathered.
Like the black box?
Yeah, that's it, black box, that's it.
Okay. So this would just, you know, put something formal in place, saying that we, you know, we here in the city of London prefer that trains travel thirty miles an hour, and they're fast. All right. Then what are our wishes here?
I was going to leave it on.
Leave it on.
Okay, I agree. All right, we are on to roundtable, begin with Mr. Eads.
So I brought this up last night, I want to bring it up publicly tonight. I want to thank some people, whether or not you live on the south side of the tracks, we're going to say, you may travel over there, and those have been awful for a long time. There's been plenty of scuttlebutt, and we've had discussions with Bill Long in the, in the Service Committee, we've talked about this probably for six months at least, and he says he'll show you, and I believe him, he'll show you his phone records, he was making phone calls every week to try to get November Fox Southern here to patch those holes so that they didn't rip your axle out from underneath your car. But he's not the only one that did it, and I think it takes some, you know, where it takes the village to raise a child, I also think it takes our residents to also raise a little hell with the, with the trains or the, the railroad company and say, hey, we're tired of this, we want you to do something. I think it's easy to ignore one voice, it's a lot harder to ignore many voices. And in this case, I know there were a number of people that also made those phone calls. Vince Morris comes to mind, that he, he did that, there was a few ladies. I, I had shared some information way back when, because there was a different number that I came across, but I don't, I'm not going to take any credit for this, I think it's everybody else, and Tommy Boyd, he was also pretty instrumental in making those phone calls and reaching out to the right people, and sharing the information on who to reach out to, which may have been different than what Bill had. But I just want to thank everybody that took that step, because even though it's a minor little thing, I think a lot of people notice it. And without the, the citizens getting involved, I don't know how long it would have taken. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Robinson?
I, I don't have a whole lot, I'm excited about the new projects going on downtown. Uh, I am excited to get rid of the plywood windows. I am so happy to see that go, so I'm excited to see the progress that this town's making. I understand people don't like change, but sometimes change is good, so. May third is the next public service meeting, and it's at six P.M.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hayes?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I'm glad that downtown is going to be coming into shape. Like Mr. Robinson said, some people don't like change, but change is coming, and whether you like it or not, it has to change, it's got to get better. Uh, if we just stay like we have been, we're just going to cover this town over in ash someday, so we're not going to let that happen. We're going to move forward, we're going to take care of business, and we are taking care of business. I want to thank all city employees for jobs well done. Mr. Long, I understand that we've put in like, correct me if I'm wrong, three hundred water meters in the last three weeks, month? Is that correct? That's up a significant, and I say again, a significant amount. Thank you. You're doing a good job out there, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure a lot of people do. Just like to thank the Lord for protecting this town yesterday, we had a lot of storms going around, and we were under the gun there for a while, but a lot of praying people, and we got a lot of rain, but we didn't get any tornadoes, so I'm thankful for that. Next public or safety meeting is Tuesday, April the eleventh, five P.M., right behind us in the conference room. Thank you all, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hitt?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone who's here showing an interest in the city, and I'd like to wish everyone a meaningful Easter weekend, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Stahl?
I saw an article in the paper the other day about Aqua Ohio, since we've talked about that, anyone's interested. Aqua Ohio is asking the state regulators to raise rates for water and sewer customers in Franklin, Marion counties. They ask it, it's an average of twelve point eight seven percent for water and eleven point nine percent for sewer. An average customer, there'll be a hundred twenty-four oh six a month, and that's with Lake Darby, Timberbrook, Yewbridge, some of them is close to us. And, uh, in Ohio, it's in Aqua Ohio, it's an essential utility based out of suburban Philadelphia. And going local, then, uh, the nineteenth of, uh, this month, uh, London, we go to Groveport for thirty-seventh, uh, award for Tree City USA, and our own Arbor Day will be on Friday, the twenty-eighth, at ten A.M. here in the side yard, and wish everybody a happy and blessed Easter. That's all I have.
Amen. Thank you. And I'd like to thank everyone again for being here this evening. Thank you, Mr. Boyd, for your comments and the things that you bring to us, because I know you're speaking directly with the community when you do that, so thank you for being the, the voice for them, because there's, you know, it's tough to come in front of council sometimes, so there's some people who don't want to do that, and they feel comfortable giving their concerns to you, so. And then also thank you again, Tammy, for, Tammy Brasket, for bringing that feral cat information to us, and, and like several of us have alluded to here, that the city is growing, and sometimes change is a little bit tough, but we've seen what's going on all around us, so growth is inevitable, there's nothing that, at all, that you could do to stop it, it's coming. So it's better to be able to manage that growth as it comes into our city, and, you know, to be able to direct where you want that to go versus being reactive to it. So we definitely don't want to be reactive, there are some cities that have done that, and it's, it's an uphill battle when you, when you travel uphill with the, the growth that's coming to your city, so, you know, we want to get ahead of that and, and welcome all those, uh, new, the new growth that's coming in our city. So I like a motion to adjourn.
I had a question real quick, to ask the mayor. I was reading with Middle Ohio, with the Census Bureau, said that Madison County lost like a thousand people the last couple of years. Before Plain City's grown in London, I, I was surprised, did anybody mention that or anything?
Nobody's really ta- talked too much about it. We, we grew, right? West Jefferson stayed flat, Plain City kind of stayed flat. You got to remember, not everything that's being built in Plain City is in Plain City, and it might not even be in the county. There's some, some of it will be in Union County, so, but I do believe that the county did lose some. But that could just, who knows? You know, farms selling, farms combining, things like that, could be some of the small villages losing people, I'm not quite sure.
All right, but that's not the city, so.
City's growing.
That's right, city's growing.
Thank you.
All right, so a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.